So now we'll end our recess at 10 of 8 and go back to the regular meeting. And the next item is item three, approval of minutes from the regular Board of Selectmen meeting, March 4, 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any changes, errors, omissions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Under acceptance of agenda, I do need to request some changes. Under Old Business, under letter H, I would like to have an update on the supplemental appropriation that we talked about previously. And under New Business, we have some additional forms for the grant that we're applying for, for the homelessness prevention. And we will have letter A, Fair Housing Action Plan. Letter B, if you could add, Fair Housing Resolution. Fair Housing Resolution. And then letter C becomes Authorizing Resolution for the Small Cities Program. So I'm going to repeat that. Letter A will be Fair Housing Action Plan. Letter B, under New Business, will be Fair Housing Resolution. Letter C, Authorizing Resolution for Small Cities Program. And then letter D will be as noticed ADA Notice and Grievance Procedure. Letter E, Land Conveyance Acceptance of the Right-of-Way for the Bain subdivision. And then letter F as in Frank, refunds of excess payments, and they're listed there. And with that, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Yeah.
So moved by Lou and seconded by?
Second, Rick. No, whatever.
Rick. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Under Communications and Correspondence, I just put on here an update on the coronavirus 19. As you know, we are within the town every day. At noon, we update whatever information we have received. Today's update was that we would not be accepting any bulky waste at the transfer station for at least the next few weeks. I think, did we set a date on that, Bob? No. So I'm going to say at least for the next two weeks. And that would be because when money changes hands, we feel that's a real potential for contamination and we want to eliminate that. So everyone can purchase their bags at Adams Food Stores, and they can certainly bring their household waste to the transfer station and put it in the appropriate container, as well as all of their recycled materials. But bulky waste, we're going to hold off on using the scale because of the close proximity that the staff have with customers at that point. There's some other protocols that Bob Shea has put in place at the transfer station, and stay tuned in case there's anything additional that needs to be changed. You may already be aware that town hall staff are working. They are in their offices, as are the library staff. They are in, actually, the town hall in the Buck Foreman Building, Youth Services, Parks and Rec, the Senior Center, all departments, police, public works, they're all working. However, the public is not to come to the town hall or to any of the town buildings. We ask instead that you telephone the respective departments and that you also use email and limit your visits. If you need something, we certainly will do our best to accommodate your needs by the respective staff. Again, this is to reduce the potential for contamination. As you can see, we're having our meetings without the public here, and we are using Zoom, which is helpful for people to observe and to participate. Is there anything additional that the selectmen want to add on the update on the virus? Or any questions you may have? Dave had brought, Dave Kuzminski had brought to my attention that there was an email that came in just before our meeting, and it was from CCM, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities and Council of Small Towns. And they're telling us that the governor is contemplating further change associated with budget adoptions within the cities and towns. So we're going to need to pay special close attention to that. I had spoken with our town clerk in that our referendum requires that people go to the high school and that they gather in, it's usually about seven or 700 to 1,000 people that participate. So there's some concern in light of coronavirus. It's something that I think our governor is looking at, and as I get more information, I'll be sure to share it with the selectmen as well as the public. So stay tuned on that. Under Public Comment, David Murphy had had a question during our public hearing, which I didn't have the answer readily for. It had to do with brush. So we'll talk about that under the, let's see, that would be letter B under Old Business. And I had an email from Tim Dickerson at 702, and he had a comment on it. I'm going to read his comment, and we'll react to that comment at that point in the agenda. Does that sound correct? So Tim Dickerson from Bell Court writes, Dear Portland Board of Selectmen, I wish to express my opposition to the new brush fee. As a resident of Portland, I feel we pay enough in taxes that we should not have to pay to dispose of brush. We already pay to get rid of just about everything else. We already pay a $30 permit fee. What does this get us? The right to pay to get rid of almost everything else. What is still free? Grass clippings, leaves, scrap metal, and recyclables? I'm not sure how the brush fee was determined, but putting a $40 fee per tonne does not seem reasonable but excessive. Did the town weigh numerous brush loads to get an idea of how much they weigh? Do they have a count of the number of loads per month received? How many of these were resident personal loads of brush versus commercial entities making money off bringing brush to the transfer station? If a fee is necessary, and I know there is a cost to renting the large wood chipper, I'd love to know how much it costs before they implement a fee. It should not be the same for resident personal use and commercial business use. How about giving two tickets with each annual dump sticker, each one allowing one personal use pickup truck or equivalent load of brush? This would basically cover spring and fall cleanups. Commercial loads can either be charged by the tonne as proposed, or maybe sell them additional tickets at a cost per ticket for one load. Maybe $10 per pickup truck load. By using tickets, you will also reduce the number of scale interactions and also reduce wear and tear on the scale. If the scale interactions increases, are there plans to have more employees working the transfer station? We had earlier a similar question from Mr. Murphy. Let me find that.
Can I respond, please?
I saw that. I just want to repeat what he had asked, Bob, and then I'll have you respond to it when we get to that point in the agenda. Mr. Murphy had asked, what is the current total cost to mulch our brush? Does this fee include mulching and removal? And if so, can we see about saving that removal cost and keeping it local? If we add this, will it require additional manpower at the transfer station at a much higher cost for the additional person? Today, when I go there, I'm not checked for a sticker if dropping off brush. Someone would have to now stop all cars to check for stickers. It appears there's not enough manpower to stop vehicles, check stickers, and also run the scale. What are your thoughts? So he had indicated, if I didn't read that correctly, that he was not checked for his sticker when dropping off the brush. So we'll talk about that a little bit later. And I thank you both for your comments. I hope you're still watching on Zoom. So the next item, number seven, is Old Business. I'm going to ask Mr. Armstrong, is there any, before I go on to that item, is there any other public comment?
There are several. Do you want to do that now?
Yes. Can you read them?
Yep.
Thank you.
Hey, there we go. All right, let's not drop my phone. Okay. So first question is from Edward Zernicki. His question is, does the Chatham Health District have estimates with regards to COVID and potential vaccines? Do we have?
I don't have any information tonight.
Okay.
But we'll look into that.
And when will the CEO position be filled?
CEO position has been noticed, and interviews will happen within the next few weeks, so hopefully sooner than later, but I don't have an exact date.
All right. Next is from Laurel Steinhouser, and it is, just to clarify what Ralph was talking about with the library's digital resources. The library has seen demand for Hoopla, one of our platforms for assessing, accessing books and movies, increase over the last couple years. The library currently funds Hoopla through our memorial fund, and the cost increases as the usage increases. So the board has had to place limitations on how many online resources individual accounts can access. The board is hoping that moving forward, the town will begin to provide funding to cover this important service. Jan Nocheck will be able to answer specific questions about Hoopla and usage numbers. Laurel Steinhouser, Library Board of Directors.
Thank you, Laurel.
Next question is also from Edward Zernicki. Please explain under police budget shifts per day, coverage per shift, shift and day per week for highest incidents, and shift and day per week of lowest incidents. Do we have that information?
I do not have that information, so we will have to get that for our next workshop. I will ask the police department to assist with that.
Okay.
So you're recording these questions, right?
As well, yes. So we'll have a transcript.
For them to me?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
And to our recording clerk as well.
We have a question from Mr. Don Guin. Have we considered using a drive-up voting system for the budget and/or voting, a system like the bank uses?
Something that we can send to our town clerk and registrars for their consideration. Thank you, Don.
Okay. Next question comes from Jen McGinnis, 18 Co. Avenue Extension. I would like for the town to please consider not raising water and sewer rates. The current rates are already very high for Portland residents using the city water lines.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul Acker, 32 Bartlett Street. I support the BOS taking action to move the dog park forward. And he says, thank you.
Could you repeat that, please?
So he supports the BOS taking action to move the dog park forward.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
What was his name?
Mr. Paul Acker, if I'm saying that correctly. 32 Bartlett Street.
And I have another comment on that that I'm going to read when you're finished.
And this is also about the dog park from Mr. Dave Murphy. He says that he submitted a public comment on the dog park to be read. You have that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so that's coming up as well. And the last one is from Mr. Edward Zernicki. Are all park and rec programs self-sustaining? And if not, is there any consensus to run only programs that are cost neutral?
The Park and Recreation Department does get a transfer from general fund, so the whole department is not self-sufficient. Many of the programs are, but not all of them. But as far as the personnel that run the department, that is covered by a transfer, if I'm not mistaken. Personnel expenditures for the Park and Rec Department include full-time salary of one director, a full-time salary of an administrative assistant, plus numerous temporary seasonal employees. The department is responsible for offering many recreational and community programs, such as the recreational basketball program, holiday tree lighting, Easter egg hunt, road race, and other townwide activities. The general fund contribution, budgeted in fiscal year 2020, is $236,832, which is approximately 58% of the total budget. And I will just repeat what the total budget is. Total budget for parks and recreation is $406,092. Other comments or questions, Kevin?
So there'll be another point after this, correct?
I'm sorry?
For public comment? There'll be an additional point after this?
Public comment is also at the end of our agenda.
Okay.
But before we move on, in case you get more, let me know. But the public comment from Mr. Murphy came today at 2:10 in the afternoon. And Dave lives on Carousel Drive here in Portland. Dear Portland Board of Selectmen members, this is in regard to upcoming agenda item, letter D, Dog Park, under Old Business. Although this is not the highest of priority, given the seriousness of what's impacting our country, nonetheless, it is on the agenda and we need to act on it. To my fellow dog lovers, your help is needed if we are to ever see a dog park in Portland. This maybe is our last chance, as it appears many of the selectmen are not interested in moving this forward. I guess the selectmen forgot the public meeting on November 6th to a packed room of people that supported this. Maybe they forgot that in the survey for the $6 million park, that many, many people wanted a dog park, or the fact that a dog park is proven to be a positive benefit when people look to relocate to a town. And most importantly, given we already own the land, this would benefit the many dog owners in town at a relatively very low cost. Let's remember, an exploratory committee spent most of 2019 gathering information. Presentations were made to the Board of Selectmen in August 2019, and a public hearing was held November 6th to a full room of supporters. Four months have passed with no action. Many I know are concerned about costs, but rough estimates say this could be done for as little as $20,000. And donations or site advertising could offset a big portion of this. Also, Public Works performing some of the work, like planned at the Brownstone Riverfront site cleanup, would also minimize costs. To keep things in perspective, the town spent $6 million on a park, but left out a dog park, which people on the survey said they wanted. And November, and in November 2019, okay, $7,000 for Christmas decorations, which last six weeks. Plus, last year, the town experienced a $600,000 budget surplus. So it appears the cost of a dog park would have minimal budget implications, but drive significant benefits. I think it's time to make a decision and move forward, even if it's to form a committee or propose an initial smaller starter site. We need to at least do something and take some sort of action. Thank you for your consideration, Mr. Murphy. Any more comments?
That's all said.
Okay. And there is opportunity later in our meeting. So on to Old Business. And the first item, Bob is here, schedule, oh no, you're not building permit fees, I'm sorry, Bob. Building permit fees, we talked about during our public hearing. We had no comments from the public in regard to the building permit fees, and I'm going to read them again. First thousand or portion thereof is currently $15. The proposal on the table and was, didn't receive any comments tonight, is to go to $25 per first thousand or portion thereof. For every thousand or portion thereof after that amount, it's currently $12, and the proposal is to go to $15. The construction without a permit goes away. We no longer will have that as a $100 fee if you're found to be constructing without a permit. That's been removed from the proposal because it's no longer under local jurisdiction. It's to be prosecuted by the state of Connecticut for those found to be doing such activity. So in front of you, I'll ask Jim to read the schedule for building permit fees, if you would, Jim.
Sure. You want it in the form of a motion?
Sure, if you're making the motion.
Well, we'll get it at least to discussion that way.
Yes, thank you, Jim.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we approve the schedule for building permit fees as proposed on March 18th. Reading of the memo here as follows. Whereas the schedule of fees for town services shall be set from time to time, and a schedule of such fees shall be filed with the town's clerk office. And whereas, in accordance with section 405.3 of the town charter, the Board of Selectmen shall by ordinance fix the charges for services rendered by the town. And whereas pursuant to section 405.3 of the Portland Town Charter, a public hearing was held by the Portland Board of Selectmen. Now therefore be it resolved that the below-listed fees for administering the building code permits be and is hereby adopted. They read as follows, first thousand or portion thereof, currently $15, proposed to $25. Every thousand or portion thereof, currently $12, proposed to $15. And construction without a permit, currently $100, becomes not applicable, as it was removed from local jurisdiction and to be prosecuted by the state of Connecticut. Be it further resolved that the above service fees enacted pursuant to section 405.3 shall become effective 14 days after adoption by the Board of Selectmen.
Motion's been made by Jim. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ralph, and I'll open it up for discussion.
Yeah, Susan, I just would like to-
Michael.
I would just like to say something for the record, is that I've spoken with many builders in town, and although the increases are miniscule, in the overall scheme of things, they were satisfied with that. And I think the only people that will be affected is by builders who do new construction of houses, where the numbers will increase significantly, but will be passed out to the, passed down to the consumers. And in an already market where it's difficult to sell new construction houses, it may affect it a little bit, but they're not too worried about it. But they will, they join me in saying that they do approve that these changes are acceptable.
Thank you, Michael, for doing that research. I appreciate that. It's good to hear. Any other comments tonight?
I have a question.
Rick?
On this construction without a permit, so if it's removed from local jurisdiction, but somebody's building something, a structure or a shed or something, without a permit, who reports it? I mean-
The building official would have to do that.
The local building official?
Yes.
Would still report it to the state?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
So then, see, it would be under his jurisdiction that he would cite the property owner and then make the appropriate referral to the state of Connecticut. Lincoln White is our building official, and he makes many referrals as required to the state of Connecticut. Because as you know, the building official is actually an agent of the state. He works under the state building code, and he works, as far as his profession is concerned, under the state building official. So in terms of attendance, in terms of, you know, sick time, vacation time, things of that nature, he's under jurisdiction under the first selectman's office, but he is responsible for the implementation of the building code as per state law, and he reports for those purposes to the state building official.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
I just had a question, Susan.
Sure, Lou.
When was the last time we increased these rates?
It's been quite a few years. Do you remember, Tom? 2010.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So for the record, the fees were last raised, we believe, in 2010, and were in 2020. It's been a while. Any other comments? The jurisdiction for this under ordinance is that from time to time, this board looks at fees. We've held a public hearing, but it is up to this board to determine what these fees will be. So if there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item is the schedule of fees for the transfer station and resource recovery. And our Director of Public Works, Bob Shea, is here. And I hope, Bob, that you'll be able to shed some light on the comments that were made earlier tonight, in particular on the brush.
So in relation to the two questions, I think, from Tim Dickinson and Mr. Murphy? I did respond to Mr. Murphy. I was tied up earlier, unfortunately. I apologize for not being here, but there's an awful lot going on. We have done research, I have done research, quite a bit of research. We have weighed at our transfer station to get an idea what an average pickup truck, vehicle that's a little smaller than a pickup truck, as well as a masonry dump truck, is concerned. I reached out to over 20 different towns that are currently charging for brush and have been for years to try to get an average cost and how they started, and where they are, and where they're going. This has been my second time at it, to try to develop a budget that we are trying to limit our general contribution from the general fund into the resource recovery revenue base that we have there. Our contract service line item is impacted greatly by our brush removal. The brush removal has cost in the area of $10,000 to $13,000, depending on how many times a year we need to do it. Last year, it was $9,800 for one grind and removal, and we were very lucky to get that done in one shot, based on the amount of brush that we had. Those prices are going to be going up significantly, in the area of $12,000 to $14,000. And that is based on demand. There was a larger demand for mulch from the commercial grinders that were doing this job because they're reselling it. As you've seen over the past year, the amount of devastation in the state of Connecticut due to the disease, there's an abundance of mulch because of the amount of tree work that's being done in the state. So the need to come and grind and retain that mulch for future sales is not as great. Price is going to go up. And we are expecting that, based on the amount of brush that we have there, which is very difficult, but if people visit, it's getting greater every day, is going to cost us in the area of $12,000 to $13,000 this year. So a lot of money for one load. We are limited, Dave had, Murphy, Mr. Murphy had asked a question- We are limited, Dave had, Murphy, Mr. Murphy, had asked a question related to if we can store the mulch and use it within town. It's an awful amount of cubic yards of mulch, and we are limited by DEP, based on the operation of the transfer station and how much mulch we can actually store there at one time. And we actually have a difficult time, you know, managing that. We do, we try to use it in certain areas, but it's an awful lot. And the company that hauls and grinds for us actually takes a lot of that mulch for us as well, as part of that fee, which allows me to stay within our permit. To get back to fees, we're trying to find a way to offset that cost, certainly not all of it, but maybe a third of it to begin with. So, some of the fees across the board through the contacts that I made through towns range anywhere from forty dollars a ton up to seventy-five dollars a ton. And they also range from, per load, twenty dollars a load, doesn't matter the size, but they limit the commercial size and/or the masonry dump. So, to put all this into perspective, the forty-dollar ton, per ton number comes down to the weights that we looked at and what I thought that would be a good way to start, to see where we are, to try to get some funding back in to recover some of the costs to help this budget basically survive. So, a full masonry dump truck, we weighed three or four of those. We did our own in town, ended up being about point four-four of a ton, so that would have been about a seventeen-dollar load. Your average standard pickup truck, about point one-three, which is about five dollars. Anything smaller than that ranged between two and three dollars. One town, I think, that Mr. Dickinson had mentioned, I researched one town, I believe, that did give tickets. It was two tickets a year, and they will be changing. That is very difficult to do, and they're finding that there are many disgruntled residents that would like to bring bunch, brush in more often and aren't allowed to. So, that's going to be going to tonnage. There was just a few that really charged by the cent per pound, but that equated to just about six to eight dollars a pickup. So, I tried to take the best of both worlds there and took the lowest that I could see and offered the forty dollars a ton. I don't know what that's going to do for revenue because I think we'll see less brush coming in. Yes, Rick?
Do you feel it's gonna, like, stopping the way the trucks and collecting a couple of bucks is going to be labor-effective? I mean, are you going to have to, do you have the manpower to handle this or is it going to be an inconvenience for the few employees that are there?
It's difficult to manage the transfer station as it is with two employees, one that hauls three days a week. But with that said, the scale is always manned. So, there's always a scale operator there that's able to weigh and watch as he can the operation, the dress, you know, the brush will be dumped and they'll come back to the scale. The usage of the scale will be based on the usage of people coming in to dump brush. It's a fairly new scale. It's meant to handle very large trucks, not pickup trucks, so I'm not too concerned about the maintenance of the scale and the ability of the scale to function. So, with that said, there'll be more activity. There'll certainly be more activity on the scale, but then again, the scale is always manned.
Okay, well, that was really my point. If there's somebody there, fine, keep them busy. But if, you know, if the guy's not there and he's off doing something else and he's got to stop and walk over to the building and the scale, then, you know, to collect two bucks or five bucks, maybe we're spending more money.
It could be a situation on slower days, you know, obviously the attendants are doing other work there and they are going back and forth to the scale. You know, that could create an issue. I don't believe so, primarily on Saturdays, which is a very busy day. Sometimes on Mondays, the scale is usually manned, you know, full-time. There was a question related to that they're not checking stickers. Well, no, we don't have a gatekeeper. We certainly don't. Years ago, I think we did. We had many more people down there that were doing that type of job. But I will say that we do our best. There are binoculars, people may think they're not watching you, but they are. They are looking for those tickets. They'll stop you on the way out if they find after you've been dumping stuff that, you know, you don't have a permit and they'll ask you to come and get one. But it's the best we can do. Do people get by? Maybe. We try, but, you know, they do back in to their waste areas when they're usually dumping their waste. Their stickers are facing the windows for the scale operator that's watching them, as well as if we have an attendant out near the, you know, the booth, he's always watching and trying to control that. So, I hope that answers, you know, one of the questions that no one stops your vehicle to look for your sticker. But we also know vehicles, we've seen vehicles for years, and we usually try to place the stickers where they're somewhat visible and we know what we're looking for. So, we're doing our best.
What do you think of the idea of giving people, giving households a ticket for the spring and a ticket for the fall to bring one load of brush?
You can do that. That's going to limit the amount of brush, for sure, but I don't think that, I'm not sure if the residents will really approve of that. I mean, we do, and we have to remember that, and it costs us, we do pick up everyone's brush every other year, which is a considerable amount of brush that we have to manage at the transfer station. So, we still do offer that service, which I think is a good service. And I think that a little bit of that is some of the money that we make sure that we transfer through, out of the general government, into the transfer station. But we seem to be getting an awful lot of brush. We don't accept commercial brush. But, with that said, those masonry dump trucks that are coming in from residents in town who have stickers on those that may be doing work, it's very hard and difficult to find out if they're doing work in town, if they're doing their own work, or if it's coming from out of town. That's difficult.
One thing that I know is that our transfer station is very popular. People like it, you do a great job. The staff do a wonderful job at the transfer station. I get a lot of compliments, Bob. We want to increase the utilization of the transfer station. Want to increase people's coming down there and being part of the resource recovery as well as utilizing it for their household garbage. So, anything that we can do to, I think, incentivize people in using the transfer station is something the board should consider. I don't want to make it too onerous for our staff, but I think it's an interesting suggestion that once you get your thirty, is that what the sticker's going to be? Thirty dollars, right? It's going to stay the same. So, once you get that thirty-dollar permit fee, what do you get for it? Well, you get to go use the scale and you get to, really, it's a good deal, even though it's going up slightly, but the bringing your bulky waste is a great service that you provide. Mattresses, clean mattresses that you bring, that you don't have to pay for. The ability to bring some of your recyclables, which is ever-changing, ever-changing. The market and the ability for those commodities to bring revenue has just changed totally. But it's also a place for people that they can bring their household garbage and they don't have to have a hauler if they don't want it. So, I think if you can incentivize people to get their, get one sticker or one ticket for the spring and one ticket for the fall to bring a small amount of brush, it says "thank you" to those that buy the permit fee, and it says "come more often and utilize our services." It's a great service that we provide to our community. We do underwrite it, and I think we ought to point out that in terms of taxes, let's see, what do we provide for resource recovery? I don't have that memorized. Do you have that memorized? Jim?
What is she looking for?
Nope, I can find it, it just takes me a minute here. Thank you. So, on page one twenty-eight, the Resource Recovery Department, actually the previous page, under revenues, thank you, Mike. The transfer in from the general fund is a hundred and eighty-one thousand one hundred forty-two dollars from general taxation, and the total department is three hundred and fifty-three thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars. And I know Tom puts that in the beginning of your budgets and tells you that resource recovery contribution from the general fund is fifty-one percent of the total budget. So, about half is paid for by taxes and half is paid for by other fees. Tom, did you want to comment on that? Well, while they're conferring. That's my thought. I think it would be something that, I haven't thought about that before until Mr. Dickinson brought it up, but it certainly incentivizes people to buy their sticker, clean their yards on that year in particular that we don't pick up brush. And I can tell you, there's a lot of people, me included, that probably bring brush all year long.
So, do you mean to make one year only each season and continue to pay the driving fee you talked about?
Yeah, yeah. It would only be one time in the spring and one, I guess, one pickup, one small pickup.
So, we would have to, that would be permitted only. So, we would have to develop some type of ticket, purchase some type of ticket to give to those who buy a permit. So, there'd be an extra cost, you know, for us to provide a ticket of some sort and to verify that when they come in. So, you'd have to have your permit to enter the transfer station, to begin with, and then you would have to, then we would give them two tickets. If you were to do it another way, I'm not sure if we can manage that.
No, it would have to be a numbered ticket system.
With the permit?
With, only if you buy a permit, Bob. So, if you're buying the transfer station permit, which is thirty dollars, you get two.
Right. So, once you hand your ticket in, you know, your tickets are gone and if you're used to someone else's, you know, it's, that's the way it is. That'll be a, that'll, I mean, there are people that use, that I know for a fact, that are many people in town with stickers that use the transfer station probably on a monthly basis for brush. I'm not quite sure how they clean, what they do. There's, you know, a lot of land in the country, there's a lot that's done. It's not, it's not just one or two, but-
But you would be-
It'll limit it.
How many permits do you sell a year?
About twenty-two hundred, you know, we buy about twenty-five hundred permits. It's ranging, you know, it's very interesting. If you really, I could be here for a half hour to talk about it, but you're at, your commercial contractor in town is moving two hundred and forty ton of garbage, and we are moving twenty. And it's reducing. So, we are, our garbage usage is reducing at the transfer station slightly, and our commercial hauler is increasing. So, that, those are scary numbers. We're looking at an increased cost to dump our MSW. Those numbers are going up. Susan has been very instrumental in that issue that's going on in Hartford with the facility, as well as the increases that we are, we're getting increases, I think ten percent, on our waste that's going to be going, as well as our bulky waste. So, those are the moves that we're making to try to stay in line with our budget. The only area is that we can try to offset some of these additional costs is in the area that I can see is brush, where I see that we're spending an awful lot of money to mitigate that pile. And we need to find a way to try to, everybody's doing it, so.
But it's a real, sort of, customer providing service. I mean, it's, I can't say enough great things about the transfer station. I think it's really well-run and do a good job. But if we can give our customers a little token of our appreciation, I think it might go a long way, and maybe they'll decide they should be bringing their household garbage there as well because we would like you to do that. What do you think? I'll open it up to the board.
Susan, I'm kind of in agreement with you there that I feel like taxpayers feel that they're not getting anything for their tax money, and this is a service that we do provide for them, and I think they are appreciative of that. I'm kind of with you and the emailer about the two-ticket program. And I say it wouldn't hurt to try it for a year. Give it a year's shot. If you feel like it's failing, we can go on to Plan B. But I'm kind of with you, Susan, and the emailer on that.
Well, I think the two-ticket program will absolutely decrease the amount of brush. There's no doubt about it. Because you have permitted residents that are using, bringing brush in many, many more times than two tickets a year. Because they can, because they're permitted to do so.
But now they'll still be able to bring in as much brush as they choose. They'll just have to pay for it.
She's not saying, like, what you talked about where one town only gave you two. She's saying you get a free ride once, but then you pay the, because we, I asked her that question, what she thought.
That's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah. That means you go, you come once.
The first two loads.
Missed it, sorry. Lot going on. You guys were talking and I asked her that question.
Well, I think that's what Tim was saying here, wasn't he?
Yeah. What's the value, what's the cost of a typical load, please? Point one, two tons, so maybe four, five dollars?
For your average pickup.
Yeah, I mean, they get their two trips per year, plus they get us to pick it up at the curbside where they only have to drag it about ten feet or twenty feet every other year, which is great.
It is great.
And then they can pay as needed for the other brush.
Let me just repeat what Mr. Dickinson said. If a fee is necessary, and I know there is a cost to renting the large wood chipper, it should not be the same for resident personal use and commercial business use, which you explained it isn't. So, suggestion, how about giving two tickets with each annual dump sticker? Each one allowing one personal-use pickup truck or equivalent load of brush. This would basically cover a spring and a fall cleanup, if you have a small yard. Commercial loads can either be charged by the ton as proposed. Now, you said you don't allow commercial loads. However, people who possess a dump sticker or a transfer station permit sticker may be bringing something that may be coming from, maybe someplace that they brought brush in from.
Which you'll capture now on a fee.
Yeah.
By using tickets, you would reduce the number of scale interactions and reduce wear and tear on the scale. But my understanding is what he's saying is that you would have to pay for every other.
It doesn't say that, so that's why I was confused. He just said give two tickets, and there's nothing about continuing the fee. He just didn't like the forty-dollar per fee. So, that's an option. That will create the fact that everybody that has brush has to come over the scale. They have to either present a ticket or they'll be weighed and charged.
Yeah, and I think two tickets, if you're doing it with a pickup truck equivalent, that'll also help you, you know, basically be able to charge for the folks that are doing it perhaps on a little grander scale.
Are you thinking that the ticket has to be somehow numbered with the dump pass or are you going to, like, not really care that it's-
Well, if you're selling twenty-two hundred dumps, stickers, you'd have forty-four hundred tickets. But what's wrong with that, if there's a limit to the tickets that are given out?
I don't think there's anything wrong. Just, I was just curious how, if you would.
I'll have to produce a ticket that can't be reproduced. You know, with the Portland seal and like we do for the transfer station, that will be for brush. And along with the permit sticker that we do every year, it'll go along with that, two of those, which will be handed in.
The question I'm asking is, you get a permit sticker, I think there's a number on it.
Correct.
So, when you get your permit sticker for your windshield, is your brush sticker going to have the same number, so?
Please don't let me do, have to do that.
I don't really care, just for- It's about a thousand, about eight hundred, a thousand dollars to create that sticker here.
Yes.
Somewhere in that, maybe a hundred dollars. So, it's, you know, if you try to do it some other-
You're not going to put it on your windshield, though. It's just going to be, I think, a piece of paper, yeah.
Yeah, a little chip, like. Or there's two, you know, there's two locations, sold from the public works office, or sold from the transfer station. So, just a little bit of control.
Yeah, there's a little bit of control there. You know, certainly we'll have permits, you know, that get the two other tickets and that can be handed back. We have to, I'll have to look at the cost of that. It's, you know, to be an additional, remember now, I buy a ticket, now I need two more to add to that. So, there's a cost. There's going to be a cost to produce the tickets. It's two to one now. You get one permit, but now I have to do two more tickets for that permit. So, we have to develop those. That being paper, cardboard, whatever it is, there'll be a cost to do those.
It shouldn't be.
Shouldn't be. Well, that's what I say, but then we get quotes and prices in and as soon as you have to print them. Oh, absolutely not.
Come on. Put it, you put on a piece of paper and you run it through the copy machine. That's what I would do. Now whether or not that works, that's what I would do.
I should just volunteer.
Yeah, I'll volunteer. I'll volunteer to make the tickets, but.
Well, I, I know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't come up with a complicated, we don't want to increase a lot of costs.
Basically.
Michael Hernandez suggested this be a.
The size of a business card, we could do it. Could do it.
You just can't.
We're innovative here.
We can certainly do it. We can use local vendors to do it. We can do whatever you.
Yeah, but you don't want it to be reproduced either.
Listen, I'm here to try to find a way to balance this budget without increasing this one-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand dollars from the general government into the transfer station and to be perfectly honest with you, for people that don't use it. As part of their taxes, right? So I'm doing my best.
Maybe if they know, they pay thirty dollars and they get two free passes to bring their brush, maybe they'll be incentivized to buy more.
But previously, I don't know, because previously they just brought their brush, right?
I'm talking about other people. If they know they can get a free brush.
Yeah. I mean, to, to be perfectly honest with you, the recycling that happens there is good. The areas that we gain revenue is slipping.
Let me see if I got any other comments on this. I have a comment on the dog park. Let me get there, by the way, don't let me forget. It's great having everybody listen to us, but if you could go through the Zoom, that helps because I may, I might miss it, so.
Yeah, we're on line up.
Oh, well. So did we, we didn't make a motion on this, did we? What do you want to do, folks?
I think a pilot is a good idea. We've never done this before. I think it's maybe a little shock treatment to the people that have never paid that before. So maybe we do this gradually. We say, it's gonna cost forty dollars a ton. However, you're gonna get two tickets, two free tickets a year. We try that for this year. If in fact it reduces the amount of chips, well, maybe that will reduce the amount of cost in chipping the brush. But we don't know those things right now, so I maybe, why don't we just do that for this year and then move forward? Let's look at it again next year.
If we put an asterisk next to the brush, residents only with permit, and it said two tickets for, what's the size of a pickup? I don't know.
There are all kinds of sizes.
I don't know what size.
Yeah, it'd be your standard six-foot bed.
Six-foot bed?
They call them standard pickups. At many other facilities, that's how they do it. Small, standard.
Six-foot bed, standard pickup, or just a standard.
It's very difficult.
What? I'm sorry?
It's very difficult. Truck sizes are flat beds on pickup trucks and that's a standard pickup with a flat bed. It's, it's hard. You just do it by load.
I think you'd want kind of a.
So you get two loads of brush, no commercial loads, no double-axle trailers, you know, because you put a lot of brush on those. It has to be, you know, basically a reasonable size. We can determine that when they come in.
So you don't, you don't want to say standard pickup. You just want to say two loads? How do you want it to?
Pickup load.
Two pickup truck loads?
They're pretty, you know, if it's a pickup, it's, if it's not a F-three-fifty masonry dump, then it's a pickup.
Well, this is what I'm getting at, is where I'm going. If some of these guys could, they have a dump truck and they, who knows?
That's not a pickup.
What about half-ton?
It's pickup.
I put some qualifier in there so that somebody's not coming in with a dump truck full of it. If they are, then we should be weighing them.
So the towns that have done this have taken five to six years to try to figure out how to get to that. And they've also increased their tonnage, like I said. One of them is at seventy-five and they're gonna go up this year because they're still losing money. Which is amazing, but it is true.
Well, I know last time we talked about this, Bob, and it didn't pass the board.
Right.
And this time, I'm, I'm hearing that the board is in support of trying to defray the, the large cost that's going up for this type of brush reduction in our, in our, in our town. So the two tons, I mean, excuse me, the two tickets for a half-ton pickup load of brush just mitigates a little bit of the sting.
It absolutely does. Yeah, it'll, I think it'll reduce the brush that's coming in a little bit, I hope. And then if it doesn't, at least that brush that's coming in over those two allowed tickets on the permit will be recovering some revenue for that, for the cost to mitigate it.
So we'd have an asterisk that would say two tickets for one half-ton pickup load of brush per year.
Or I would say, or smaller vehicle, because I don't want to confuse people.
Up to.
Up to, okay, two tickets for up to one half-ton pickup load of brush.
Yeah.
How does that sound?
Perfect.
So two tickets for up to one, one, one-half-ton pickup load of brush. Did you get that, John?
Two tickets for one, up to one half-ton pickup load of brush?
For one.
One.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you're referring to half-ton size pickup truck, not a half-ton on the scale of brush.
Half-ton size pickup.
Yeah, you could either say that or.
It's hard. Trust me, I've been working on this since the day I started here. And.
Two tickets for.
It's difficult. There's a lot of variables when it comes to trying to handle brush as well as chip as.
Well, the transfer station permit fee is annual.
It's annual, right, so just two tickets provided.
So that would be the only change that's being suggested here. Would that language change? Is there a motion to approve the increase in the fees? Some of which are staying the same, I should say. Lou, did you make that? Is there a second?
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
Further discussion? And I want to emphasize, this is a trial. We'll see how it goes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
And the next item we're gonna talk about is the water and sewer usage fees. I did get another comment on my phone. Bear with me for a minute. Well, it was someone that thought that she didn't want her rates to go up. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble finding it. That was the basic information. She didn't want her rates to go up. Are you getting anything else on your end?
Yeah, there are a few.
Would you let us know, please? Would you read them?
Do you want to read them now?
Yeah.
Start with. We have Mr. Elwyn Guile. He states, I wish to comment on the permit fee proposal. Any increase would dampen property owners' interest in building, maintenance, or improvement. The P O C D contains a recommendation that permit fees be reduced or eliminated in order to foster building and housing stock enhancement that would raise town-wide property values and provide the town with transferred tax revenue far greater than the reduced permit fee revenue. This analysis has been made using town permit fee records and the assessment of impact on market sale prices from highly credible real estate brokers in the area.
Thank you.
We have a comment from Mr. Don Gouin. Bob mentioned that less brush may be brought to the transfer station by the residents. How will that affect the looks of our town? Right now, much work is being done to make our town look good and, and a great job is being done by many. And he'd like that to continue.
Thank you, John.
Another comment from Mr. Elwyn Guile. Brush fee issue, there is no need for tickets. Go to the scale and the attendant flips to the permit fee log and punches a hole to indicate one brush delivery, et cetera. No tickets. So it's kind of like a voter registration list. Just check them off. Interesting.
Virtual ticket.
Virtual ticket, yes. We have Victoria Short, sixty-four High Street. She states, I don't have a pickup truck, just a medium SUV that I use for my brush. Are you going to charge me the same as a pickup?
Yeah, I would, that's why I asked that question, say up to, because I have a CRV as well, you know, so I know that's what I go that way, so.
And. Now, Mr. Sean Manning gave his address. He might still be typing, so we can come back to him. That's it for now.
Okay, thank you. So I'll open it up for discussion of the water and sewer usage rates. Jim, do you want to repeat some of your presentation and maybe other members of your committee want to comment, Rick and Ralph?
Yeah, that sounds good. What we talked about in the, in the public hearing, you know, specifically the way the rates are looking to go up, it's a direct response on the water side to the increases that have occurred with the M D C. The compounded rate's been about a little over forty-two percent in the last three years. That's, that's driving the need for us to increase the cost from our system in order to try to stay in balance with the budget. One of the things I wanted to make sure that I also captured from that is, you know, was, when we looked at the methodology for this, it's purely, and this is both for the water and the sewer budgets, we looked at actual usage and then we applied rates to them based on the budgets that are being offered tonight. Which leads to the fact that when you take a look at the budgets, the sewer budget is not, you know, the, it's not a driver of why the, the costs are gonna go up on the sewer. The sewer budget's actually going down when you look at the expenses. It's negative point-one-three percent, which I think is, there's been a real effort to try to contain costs and how we're operating these systems. The water budget is going up one-point-one percent. So in an environment where last year alone, the, the M D C raised the price of water thirteen-point-four-three percent, and that's, the cost of water is fifty-two percent of the operating budget. That would mean in order to keep pace, if you didn't see some cost containment measures being put in place, you'd have to have a much higher impact, a much higher increase in the rates. I think that the work that our Public Works Director Shay is doing to try to contain the costs have been very helpful. That's allowing us to have a little bit smaller increase. However, we were running a fifty-five-thousand-dollar deficit in the water system prior, because of the prior year increases that we've been incurring. And we're also, we're running a ninety-thousand-dollar deficit in the sewer system. And part of that was because we knew we had an issue that's been, you know, a few years in the making. And we just, we started a program about four years ago with the hope that we would get the sewer balanced in the black within four years. So this proposal for rate increases on sewer does that. And the rate increases for water also gets us there with a, with a lot of help on cost containment on the water side. The increase that's being proposed effectively in the first year, it would raise rates on, on the water side a little less than forty dollars a year. Three dollars and thirty cents a month is the estimate for the average user. If you're an above-average user of water, it may be a little bit more. If you're below average, it could be a little bit less. On the sewer side, it's just over forty dollars per year. And, and again, the rates are about three dollars and sixty cents per month that it would go up. And again, that's gonna happen. There's two successive rate increases. One in the, one on July first of this year, twenty-twenty, and the second on April first of twenty-twenty-one. It's also important to note, because I think people need to understand, and we talked about this a little bit in the hearing, is that we, we're really working hard in terms of how to contain the cost on the water side where we see potential increases coming from the M D C that are gonna be double digits for the foreseeable future. And let's hope that's not the case, but that's what's been, that's what we're seeing and that's what's kind of being, being discussed. You know, we need to be looking five years into the future and planning for that now. This contract we have with M D C runs until twenty-twenty-six. We're locked in. We have a minimum take-or-pay contract that dates back to nineteen-ninety-six. We have to get through that. And then we're able to transition over, if we do everything the way we should do it, to a Portland-owned water source or some different mechanism for providing water for our customers. That's hopefully gonna give us more control of the cost and be able to change that operational model. I just want to say a couple of things and then I want to turn it over to the chair. I do want to say thank you to both Rick Sharr and to Ralph Sampaño. We started meeting in the fall. There's been many meetings on this because it's a, it is a complicated issue, especially when you're trying to find, you're trying to find as good advantages as you can find to some not, not-too-great problems. And I also want to say, you know, we've had a lot of real support from, we've had the Water and Sewer Commission, we've had members there. You know, Dick Cody has been there. We've had Dave Kuzminsky as well. And we've also, over the period, had Norm Ward and it's nice to have the support there. And we've also had, you know, Bob Shay is the director, given a lot of assistance and getting us a lot of the information, the usage that we really needed, so. So thank you to those folks, so.
Yeah, I, I'd like to add a few things. First of all, speaking to what, you know, Jim had to say, we use true numbers. I, I mean, there's nothing more clear. We use the numbers that are actual usage for a year that we knew, a full year of. And then we applied, based on the percentage increases we have received and the percentage increases we are expecting, we applied those numbers to try a fair way to make sure that we can cover that budget. And that being said, I mean, we have to, we, we have to realize is that both water and sewer do kind of run, I wonder, I don't know if you can say a skeleton crew, but it's a very small department. So we're not looking at areas where you could say, let's look at other ways to cut costs. They're very small crews and we're also looking at a situation where our infrastructure really does actually need a lot of work as well. So because we're challenged by the M D C cre, increases that are just astronomical, we can't even really approach attacking a good core of the things we should be with regards to infrastructure. At this point, what we're trying to do is really just, I guess, just survive the M D C contract. Because it, you know, at all points, in talking with the M D C folks, this is the expected increase from this, from here on out until we hopefully could find an alternate approach. So it's, that is the challenge. The other thing I would note is that people have to realize is that the water and sewer users are really, the number of water and sewer users are a minority in the town. So it's not like we could have costs that we could apply across the board to all residents. There certainly are projects that may apply because there's water source, water usage within a town that might go into public buildings. But here we're talking about strictly the individuals and the use of their water or their sewer themselves. It's not having to do with the concern about what may have to do with the other things in town. It's really what they're using. So we really are just trying to cover the costs that they really are, they create by using, utilizing. Believe me, we, we have lots of discussions about it. We talk endlessly about the stress and strain that it's gonna have, especially on individuals that may have, be on fixed incomes. But it's, it's a true challenge and that's why we try to balance the charge of metering versus water usage to try to be fair across the board. There's no simple, easy solution to this because we talked about it enough that if there was, we would have found it. So it just isn't easy.
Well, Ralph and Jim kind of covered what's somewhat of a dire picture on the water and sewer. But I'll try to just say, I think there's hope at the, light at the end of the tunnel. On a positive side, I think there's plenty of available water in Portland that we, over the coming years, can explore and access. And we've talked about that and we'll continue to talk about it. Unfortunately, for the moment, we're tied in with this M D C contract. Unfortunately, for the moment, we're tied in with this MDC contract that we, you know, we have to live with. The other thing is, as the town, we have a relatively small water system and sewer system. We don't have a whole, you know, huge number of users. It's also an older system, but as the town, as we develop, it looks like, particularly like, say, the Brainerd Place Project. If they come online, it just helps spread the costs around a greater number of users. So I think there's a little bit of a hope there that as we add more users, it'll help spread these costs around a little bit. But the, the long-term answer, and we talk about it at our meetings, and we've met a lot this past two months. I think in February, we might have had three or four meetings. We were meeting every week on this topic. And like Ralph and Jim said, we've had support from Dave Kuzminsky and Bob Shay and Dick Cody and Norm Ward. There's more than just the three of us working on this and kicking the tires. But ultimately, I think we'll, we'll come out of this because we got a lot of smart people working on it, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, it's your pleasure.
Well, I can, is everyone okay with waiting the reading again? We've read it a couple of times.
Yes, we have read it.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we approve, that we approve the fee increases to the Department of Public Works Water and Sewer Usages Fees, as noted on the memo dated March eighteenth, twenty-twenty.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Anybody else? Further discussion? Ralph Sampaio? I do want to say that I think it is imperative that this board provide the leadership necessary and the direction toward finding an alternative way of providing at least the water to our community. The numbers that we have to pay under our contract with MDC are becoming almost intolerable. The double-digit increases are very difficult. And I know we're not the only town that is suffering from this increase, but I certainly want to encourage and work, I pledge to work with the committee, as well as the Water and Sewer Commission, that we find alternative water sources and ways of providing quality service to our community. I want to also state, and I say this all the time, that while Metropolitan District Commission rates are high, their quality of water is also high. And they've been very good to the town of Portland, but the rates are just becoming so intolerable. We hope that we'll be able to manage appropriately once this resolution passes, but it is not going to be easy. And I think it's something that this board is pledged to trying to make improvements on. Anybody else? Are you ready for a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item is letter D, is a dog park. But before we get there, is there any interest in taking a recess? Is everybody okay? Do you need water or break? No? Yes? Okay. All right, so dog park. I had another comment from someone that wanted to say a few words about the dog park. Cheryl Bragg. "Hi, Ms. Bransfield. I'm a resident of Portland and a registered voter, and I would like to ask that you raise the idea of exploring, creating a dog park in Portland at tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting. This is very important to my family and other residents." Thank you. Cheri Bragg, Portland resident. And it's spelled B-R-A-G-G. Last name Cheri, first name C-H-E-R-I. So, and I read what Mr. Murphy had sent to us earlier tonight. And I'll open it up for discussion with the selectmen. If you want me to repeat anything, I'd be happy to do so. Any further comments from the public?
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yep, there are a couple.
Okay.
I just want to add, because I actually missed this from before. Victoria Short also said, in relation to the brush pickup, that she thinks it's a good idea. She was just wondering about the vehicle size.
Okay. Thank you, Victoria.
Don Guin asks, or actually says, "I agree that we need to offset the cost of the transfer station." I assume that's in relation to the same issue. Mr. Elwyn Gild, "The water system dilemma centers on MDC. We need to examine the cost-benefit of using our own water sources with the intent to export water to East Hampton to generate the revenue that makes our system affordable to the townspeople. This needs total support from the Board of Selectmen. This is a major planning need."
I would agree, Elwyn.
No disagreement?
And that's all for now.
So do you want me, do you want me to just kind of give a little history?
Be happy.
So way back when, when we began planning the new park, we did explore the thought about, we did talk about, the former Park and Rec Director, Sean Dwyer, and I had obviously many conversations about lots of things had to do with the park. And we did spend some time talking about the idea of a dog park. So when we actually started doing and work on getting an actual design for the property, we had worked through, had that discussion with the design engineers, and with regards to what we knew were the more focal point, the things we had to fit, it just wasn't realistic to think that we could, on top of that, try to fit a dog park within the area, because you're kind of bordered, obviously you're bordered on one side with residents. You're bordered on wetlands and the car brook on the other side and a big drop-off. And then you, you have pretty rough terrain behind that without doing, obviously, very large... Believe me, we moved a lot of earth to build that park, and to try to go into that hill would have been impossible. So at that point, what we did, and a couple, well, first I would say is that, what we had done is, when we were putting together the park, is we did do a survey, and I know that Dave Murphy has referred to that survey, because I did indeed give him the information that, from the standpoint of items that were looked at or features at the park that did not end up being in the park, the dog park did come in in terms of second. But what I will kind of explain to, with regards to that survey, is that the survey was done, and we had probably about four hundred responses, if I recall. I, I actually went through the data, and it was a little under four hundred responses. So when I looked at the actual data, there was a questionnaire that said, "What would you like to see in the park that's not currently available?" And so there were a large number of entries that had to do with small features with regards to the actual pieces or components that were going to be there. But there were three particular, and I tracked three of them, because I knew the ones we talk about the most. There were three features that were identified. So when I looked at the account, the numbers in terms of comments, sixty people identified that they would have liked to have had a pool there. So it was sixty people out of three hundred and twenty-six. The second one that came in was dog park, and that's where I referred to when I spoke to Dave. And that was sixteen people out of the three twenty-six that identified a dog park. And the third feature was a basketball court, and we had eleven come in for the basketball court. So those are the bigger features that we've had many, many conversations about. But that's where, put it in the context of when I, you know, and the survey, the, the person that had done the work on the survey did bring back a bar chart and showed, you know, the dog park is second. But that's what it relates to when you look at raw data. We certainly went on, continued our work about the design of the park, but Sean and I did talk about logical locations where we potentially could put a dog park if the town chose to put a dog park. And that list of properties actually became the initial list that the Dog Park Committee, that I had written up, the description of what their roles and responsibilities would be last year. That list was the list I presented them. In terms of, just to quickly rehash, with regards to that Dog Park Committee, what we had asked them to do was to review the locations, and they went beyond just the locations that Sean and I spoke of. They looked at some additional locations, get a sense of the cost of that, look to find out what potentially could be funding sources, because at that time, what we talked about was the town would certainly provide the property for the facility, but we would look to probably find some sort of funding, either to build it, probably to build it, and also the concern was about the annual maintenance that would occur with it. And that's typically what we saw with other dog parks, that we had, Sean had reached out to his connections within the Park and Rec world, how they had handled it. And so, and, and we asked them to look at the rules and regulations that come in play with the dog park, because we know there are potential issues that could crop up with them. So that was what that group was assigned to do. They did last year, did come back. Dave gave a great presentation to kind of summarize their results. They gave an ordering of what they thought were the preferred properties. They gave a rough estimate in general, because they weren't looking at any specific property, but gave a rough estimate in terms of building a dog park. With regards to some sorts of funding sources, there was a couple grants mentioned that they had identified. And the rules and regulations really, at that point, what we saw with that was that I know the animal control officers came into that meeting and provided some documentation that went along with that. And that's pretty much where we left off, and then, you know, certainly Dave is a big proponent of it, and he's been religious in asking us, methodical in asking us frequently about what we're going to do with this. From that standpoint, I think we're kind of sitting on two directions. And I've told Dave, I thought we certainly could put together another committee and give them more, probably more directed mission, which would probably have to do with identifying a specific locate, looking at potentially a couple locations, picking a specific location, looking at an actual cost they can anticipate, come up with an idea of where we could get funding in order to, to, to take, take care of that. And I don't think it's minimized in thinking that they really need to look at the rules and regulations. Now, we spent, and I think when we talk about, and I talked to Dave, and I said, "I'm not sure what the appetite is on a Board of Selectmen," because we spent a good portion of last year listening to a very tough case that had to do with a dog in our town. So that was very difficult. And we certainly know of a couple other incidents that occurred, which were frequently referred to throughout the public testimony that we listened to. So, you know, you sit here and what you're looking at is, the thought is, you either set up another committee, and they certainly could take it to the next step to really get the details down on what we can do and what it would cost and, or what it would do to put it together. Or we could just say at this time, it's not necessarily the item. We certainly have a lot of to-dos within the town and what we want to accomplish, and we could certainly look at it from the standpoint of it's probably something we just keep on the list. I, I, I mean, I, what I hope to do is just provide some background so everyone understood, because again, it's one of those things I've kind of been involved with along the way. So I wanted to provide that information and what I think are logically the potential paths that we could go from here.
Thank you. And that's Mike.
Yes, my fellow board members. I know I'm the newest one on this board and everything, but I would just like to say that when I was running and campaigning, I had told my friends, family, and fellow townspeople that I'm running on the basis of wants to needs. And one of the things that everyone had talked to me about was the dog park and what, how I felt about it. And I told them straight up that I was concerned with it, and I thought it was more of a, more of a want than a need. And after today, especially, that we just raised permit fees, we added to the transfer station fees, water and sewer rates went up, and the possibility of a mill rate increase this year. I'm just against doing, funding a dog park at this time. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I hope they should put together a committee, but try to look, maybe privately fund it. But I would just like to say that, again, it's, it's more of a want than a need. And I think we have other, bigger fish to fry here in town. Boilers, the school, Board of Education budget. And I'm not saying that shouldn't be brought up again, but I'm just saying, I just, I just don't think we're ready for it right now. But thank you.
We going up the line?
Sure, go ahead, Rick.
I, I basically agree with Mike here, sitting on my left. Well, well said. I don't, well, I don't know where we would get the funding to build it. So I, I guess if we were to put together another committee, that, to me, would be one of the main charges of, okay, how are we going to raise the money for this? And then secondly, I guess, once it's built, I understand, or I believe, there's some ongoing costs, because it needs some supervision. So my big concern is it, is, is the whole financial side of it. And just like Mike said, it'd be nice, especially, obviously, the people that are dog lovers. From Ralph's survey, if I did the math right, you had five percent, said they were, about five percent of the people you surveyed said they wanted a dog park. And God knows, from the meetings previous year, there were a lot of dog people in the audience, so I do feel there's, you know, there's considerable amount of our population that, that seems to be in favor of this. But I just think we have other, more pressing issues to spend our money on.
Lou?
I can concur with, you know, what my colleagues over here have said as well. I go walking on the airline trail. I went out to the Riverfront Park. I've gone to the other places in town, including the Route Seventeen Park. And I've seen people take their dogs and walk their dogs and run with their dogs. And there's places for dogs in Portland. To have a confined area for a dog park, I think it's a new thing within maybe the last ten years, that people have said, "Here's an opportunity for the dogs to run free. People can talk and converse with their friends and have a cup of coffee." And, and all that is wonderful, but it's at the cost of the town to be able to build this facility, even if it was fundraised. And then the research that I've done is that where there are dog parks, like in Cromwell and Rocky Hill and Glastonbury, the cost is about a thousand dollars a year for maintenance, upkeep, new gates, fixing things. It falls on the shoulders of the Public Works Department and also on the Park and Rec Department. So at this time, I think, since we are entering a recession, and we also have a budget of things here that we would like to address, and we heard about the Board of Education the other night, that there's many things that we have in their budget that we haven't approved or we haven't suggested to approve. I would not be in favor of a dog park at this time.
Mike?
I've actually had a, a change of heart on this over the last six months or so. I, I was very enthusiastic about this in the beginning, based on my experience going to some of the local dog parks with my dogs and talking to the people there, and it seemed like a very positive experience. Most people I spoke to were enthusiastic about it. But surprisingly, I found some of the people that were most against it were some of the dog lovers in town that felt that it was very often irresponsible adults or whatever, owners of the dogs, that would let dogs mingle that shouldn't. There was a lot of dog incidences that some of the folks that really did love their dogs experienced when they're out there, in a much higher case than I thought, so. And even during the presentation by, by our town folks... they cautioned that there was a number of incidences that happened at dog parks, potential liability and whatnot. So I've kind of come around. I mean, I love the idea of it, but the number of incidents that happen and the liability and some of the ones that love their dogs dearly, that I've spoken to in town, have come down against it for reasons that I better understand right now. So I'm, listen, I'm all for looking at it and maybe, you know, some of the folks in town that really are still for it can maybe come up with a plan to fund it and self-fund it going forward. But at this point, I'm not comfortable with all the other things that we have pursuing it any further at this point.
Jim?
I actually fall in a similar category. My experience, for example, when my dog was younger, was taking it to a dog park and having a decent experience with, you know, with her having a chance to run a little bit. So I had some enthusiasm and thought, you know, this is something that could be positive. But I think going through what the community went through regarding, you know, the issue with Rocky and learning more through that, a lot of the different incidents that can occur, you know, with the dog-on-dog incidents and some of that, I think that's given me a little bit more pause and a little bit more reason to look at some of the research that talks about. There are real positives and negatives. There are things that I think it's helpful for, but I think there are also real risks and some negative sides of it. I look at it the same way. I think if this is something that ends up looked at by a private group that's privately funded, I think that if we're going to put it in the community, there would also have to be that study of what are the pros and cons? What are the communities, what are, you know, the incidents that they're running into? Not just the positive sides, but letting you get a real good idea of our communities having these in for a period of time and taking them out, for example. And also, a real program for how you're going to have the ongoing cleaning. Because we have folks that, you know, don't always clean up to their dogs when they're being walked on a leash. I think if the dog's running in a larger field, there's going to be remnants that are left behind that are not going to be found. So how does that stay clean and not become a dumping ground? So I guess I'll fall to the same thing. I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea for a private group to look at it and see how it could be managed in that way. But I think with the amount of stuff that's on our plate right now, I'm kind of okay with not proceeding at this point on it, from a town perspective.
Sounds like the consensus is to see if there's a private group that might be citizens that would be interested in pursuing this. They can get in touch with my office. I know that there's a lot of people that were at the hearing, as David pointed out, that are in favor of a dog park of some nature. And speaking with people that I personally know that want an area for their dogs, I think they're looking for an area, not, maybe not only socialization, but an area where particularly if there's a person who is maybe a little bit older, they don't want to take the dog for a very long walk, but they recognize the importance of exercise. If there was some way of encouraging those resources that we already have, where dogs could exercise without incurring an exorbitant amount of cost and making certain that the owners are responsible for the care and upkeep of any area that would be considered an exercise area. I know one area that Lou had looked at was down by our animal shelter. So, you know, I would be interested in talking to any groups or individuals that would be interested in looking at more of an exercise area for dogs that would be perhaps near to where our animal control officer could have some oversight. And I would also say some education. There's certainly a need for new dog owners and for current dog owners to learn more about the health and welfare of their animals. I know that our ACO does have a lot of concerns about a large dog park where there's an intermingling of various dogs that can cause problems. There are things that have been written and researched on that. But if there was an area where they could be exercised and it was an area that was conducive to self-maintenance, it's something we'd be interested in talking about. At this point, I don't hear a motion or a resolution that we do anything in particular tonight. But perhaps if there's more input, people can send that in to us. So we'll look at that.
And I would say, you know, obviously, if, you know, if a similar group comes forward and wants to continue their, you know, direction of trying to do that, I certainly would work with them and put together the goals and expectations that that group probably should have, based on what we've already talked about, my experience, or what we've talked about in terms of building it out. So I would certainly help with them.
Just one thing too. I would imagine that we as a town would be open to using town property if we had a group that would be able to fund the building, the fence, and other things. Do I get that sense of everyone?
I wouldn't be opposed to that. I'm not, not right there. I just think it's going to be a private effort to create it. And then, again, also looking at the ongoing maintenance of it.
Frankly, a lot of people walk their dogs around Town Hall. I see them often. And there is a fair amount of grassy areas behind Town Hall. It is a park. But certainly, people need to pick up after their dogs. And I had a comment recently about maybe an area where people are walking their dogs, and it's the New Park. One of the neighbors made a comment to me for, and I'll alert the selectmen of this, that some folks are bringing their dogs to the park and they're utilizing the facilities without picking up. So that's something that we need to take a look. Route 17.
The New Park.
The New Park.
Yeah, you know, why we're obviously talking about. We might as well discuss it, because, you know, ultimately, what we've had is we've had complaints in three areas. We've had lots of conversations at this point about around Town Hall, Veterans Park, where people have walked their dogs and they haven't really been cleaning up after them. This is a problem. We've actually talked about trying to come up with some strategies to deal with it. Recently, there was a post on, I know I hate to refer to it, but the Portland Community Sign Facebook, where someone was complaining that they had picked up around all of Middlesex Avenue Field and people were not picking up for their dog. And, you know, I knew of the discussion about on the Brandy Park that no one's supposed to be going on. But obviously, they're still walking their dogs over there and they are leaving stuff behind. So, you know, it's tough. People need to realize they need to pick up after their dogs.
Anything further? And I want to thank everyone that has an interest in this. And they should continue to contact my office. Thank you. I have nothing on the proposed land swap, but I left this on the agenda because it's something that we need to complete. So I'll ask our committee members if Lou and...
I'll let Rick talk about it.
Rick, talk about it?
Well, the last couple of exchange club meetings, I spoke to George Law. And I basically, I said something that in fact, you know, are we ready to go? I, you know, I believe the Board of Selectmen's on board to see this through. What else do we need to be done? What I gathered is it just, he indicated to me that it's kind of in the town attorney's court to just write up the necessary meets and bounds or whatever paperwork we need. And I got the impression that his, the exchange club didn't want, or he didn't want to write it up. Did he want the town's attorney to write it up? So I said, "Okay, I'll, you know, relay that back to the Board of Selectmen and the first selectman." And, you know, my thought is I, personally, I guess, I don't think it's going to be a huge legal expense. And we're, I think, we're an equal, if not better beneficiary of this land swap. So why don't we just proceed and get it done?
Okay, I'll talk to Carrie Olson.
Yeah, basically, that's what I think needs to be done.
Okay. Very good. The next item, I don't have anything back from Joe McQuade, but I did ask him and I will get back to him. As everybody knows, there's been a lot going on in terms of other crises we're working on. But I will speak with him about the ethics ordinance. Yes?
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yes.
Do we have a couple openings on that now, commission?
Well, let's see. We have Jay Swanson and we have George Law. And the newest person that we recently put on, the name escapes me, I apologize.
Was that the name from, from what we know? Yeah, from, I think I missed that meeting.
And there would be, therefore, I believe, two other...
So we nominate somebody in our...
Well, there's, excuse me, there's another person, but she had indicated she could only serve January, February, March. But just in case that we needed her, but at this point, she does not want to continue.
March is gone. So we, we have...
Yes.
Two old members and one new one right now? And a couple more opening? Well, like with...
Experienced?
Experienced, there you go. And the total number on the commission is supposed to be five? And we, okay. So we have three right now?
Yes.
But we're also looking at the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, I just needed to be brought up.
That's correct.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah. What happens when you're absent.
Speaking of appointments, are there any appointments tonight? I don't believe I have.
No, it's been on order.
So the last item is letter H, which I added to the agenda, which is the supplemental appropriation. And I just thought I'd open it up for how you want to proceed with that. I see Jim has the, you don't have it in your packets. You had it in a previous packet. Jim, you want to refresh everybody on what was on that motion?
Yeah, the, if basically, we provide... Can you guys hear me or can you hear over there?
Thank you.
All right, it provides for $46,500 for the Board of Education for security upgrades. Excuse me. It provides $60,000 for the Board of Education for HVAC upgrades. It provides $46,000 for a Ventrack tractor with attachments. That's for grounds maintenance. It provides $119,500 for the police department to be helped to equip cruiser, an equipped cruiser replacement or multiple equipped cruiser replacements. There's $5,000 for the fire, fire marshal departments. And this is for the bottle replacement for their breathing apparatus. There's $50,000 for salt shed improvements. This is for Public Works. Also for Public Works, for building and maintenance, there's $23,000 to replace a furnace. This one, I believe, was noted as the Company III furnace. There's Public Works, there's a large, it says, large dump trucks replacement with plow, $230,000 for that line item. And then, also in the Public Works, sidewalk reconstruction on grant. I believe this is for some of the engineering costs associated with some of the grant work that we've got, and that's $20,000. Total of $600,000 in all.
And if I'm remembering, last time we discussed this, but we did not set a public hearing on that.
I do not believe we have. Probably.
What do you want to do?
Jim, what was the third item?
Third item was the Ventrack tractor with attachments for $46,000. That's for the grounds maintenance. That's a tractor that's going to enable and can basically mow, and it can mow on angles, which is one of the things with the new park and with other parks that we have. It'll be a machine that'll help, hopefully, be able to maintain them more efficiently.
So were any of these items in the budget, the previous budget?
This is, I believe, the supplemental appropriation that we had $600,000 left over from a previous budget. So using some of that, we need to get ahead on some of the capital needs that we've got.
Ah, okay, all right.
But no, these items previously had appeared on longer aged capital lists that were not acted on. So they are existing items that have been floating around for a while.
Got it.
Yeah, I would think we should set a public hearing date, get some discussion on this. Just a matter of when, with everything going on.
Great. Suggestions?
I think the next meeting's April 1st, right? Or the next regular meeting would be April 1st. We could do that at seven o'clock on April 1st?
Yes, I'm sorry. Do you want to do that?
Yeah.
Are you ready to act on this in terms of setting a public hearing? Because then you'll also have to have a town meeting.
I don't know. I said, "Why not?"
Okay.
Yeah.
You have to come over here, Tom, I can't hear you, I'm sorry. With the echo, it's hard to hear you.
Is there any deliberation on that, though? At seven?
Oh, yeah, yeah, deliberation is at seven, yes. On April 1st, the deliberation for the Budget Workshop deliberation is.
So we would have to come earlier then?
You can, you don't have to have your public hearings on the actual days that you're meeting. That's just convenient. You can have a public hearing on another day. But it has to have a seven-day notice requirement. So you have to take a look at the calendar.
Urgent, how fast do you feel a decision has to be made?
Tom, can you comment on that at the microphone so that we could possibly...
Because, yeah.
There might be some time-sensitive things here, but...
Okay, that's what I'm trying to find out, because we got the regular budget to deal with.
Correct.
And we got this virus to deal with it.
Correct.
The question is, again, please?
The question is on this supplemental appropriation. Is there an urgency time-wise?
The urgency would result in, obviously, there's numerous capital expenditures that have not been funded. The capital plan is very, very large. In this current budget, there's not very much in the capital plan to not put it in the budget of 2021. The budget has, I think, off the top of my head, maybe 135 for the Board of Ed. And we're in the hundred and some odd range, 175. Most of that is for the revaluation. And so the items here that we are having significant difficulty with are police cruisers. We're spending a tremendous amount of money on repairing the cruisers that are older. There's at least three of the Chargers that are there. There's some other old, older vehicles in the 14 range that have a lot of miles on them. The boiler, we had replaced one of the boilers because it failed at Valley View. So we, the other one is of equal age and not doing as well. So it's something that you'd like to get, you know, if you're going to put one in, you'd like to do the other one. The Ventrack mower, if you want to mow your park, I would, you know, think you would need that one. The plowing vehicle, we had already sold one plow that, or a dump truck that was not working. We have another one that's more or less down and another aged one. So those are, take a time period to build. And as well as the police cruisers as well, take a time period to build. So those are the reasons of why those items are needed. And it's your, you know, urgency is whatever you would want it to be.
I guess the question in my mind is, you know, do we get through the current budget and then come back to this? Or, you know, do we act sooner rather than, say, in May or after we finish the budget? That's kind of what comes to my mind.
Will we answer that question or do you want to answer that question? You know, the intent... Um, you know, the, the intent, I believe, in this scenario was that there was funds that were determined to be a surplus of last year, and that those monies would be, we did not choose a lease into the current program to try to keep your mill rate down in fiscal year twenty-one, interest rates are very good, so a lease program would be nice, with that being said, without doing that, with limiting the capital in fiscal twenty-one, needs exist for these capital items. I have, obviously, I have no crystal ball of what could occur with the coronavirus, no, this, when we just did this, there was not even really talked about or talked about at that point, you know, are these items needed? Yes. Will they be beneficial to the town and the townspeople? Yes. Do you need to do them right this instant? I don't know, I mean, I mean, they, I do know that you spend an awful lot of money on vehicle repairs on police vehicles, we've rebuilt almost every charger that we've had numerous times, as, you know, they were not intended to be an eight-year vehicle, and obviously, we're paying for that, the plow trucks that are down or are close to being down is a troubling for you when you get into your next snow season, it does take time to build all the vehicles, it takes time to build your snow plows, I was told that if you do not acquire the mower, you're going to have severe overgrowth, and that would be very difficult to, you know, remedy once it comes into play. Again, the boiler, you have one, I was told on cold days, without the second boiler, it would be very, very difficult for that school, Valley View, to maintain temperature, thankfully, this year, we did not have many cold, cold days, and we did, the Board of Ed did utilize the general fund monies that we did provide from the supplemental appropriation of the rental income that they receive, and they utilized some of that funding to do that Valley View boiler, now they do have a twin boiler that needs the same issue, and that would be that item. So, I mean, you know.
I get it, I get it, yeah, that's fine.
Yes, Lou?
If we were to have a public hearing on?
Yes.
First of April at six-thirty, we have a hearing at seven, so could we have a public hearing on this item at six-thirty, and then we'd have our budget hearing at seven?
You're having deliberations.
And then we would have to have a?
So you're going to go over all your line items, you're going to decide how much you're going to spend for Board of Education, that's when you set your budget, and we want to do it before the eighth, because remember, we can't meet on the eighth by policy, we don't meet on holy days.
So, but as far as the supplemental fund, if we have to have a hearing and a town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so could we have a hearing April tenth and then have a town meeting April seventeenth?
The fifteenth is the date of your second April meeting, the first of April is technically your first meeting, if I'm reading the calendar correctly?
Yes, first and fifteenth of the?
First and fifteenth in April. The, the issue that we have to be clear about with our constituents is, I don't know that they always understand the difference between setting the annual budget and then looking at a supplemental appropriation, when you're doing them at the same time, there's an advantage that they, the residents, understand what we're trying to do, and that is, with the operating budget, that will require a mill rate increase, the six hundred thousand dollars that we're talking about as a supplemental appropriation are dollars that have already been taxed.
Right.
They're dollars that people have already paid, and we had a good year in terms of reduction of our expenditures in fiscal year nineteen.
And there was over?
And we also had additional revenues that year, so we finished the year with a surplus, so to speak, it's not the right technical term, but that's what it is, of an extra six hundred thousand dollars, what's typical to do is to utilize those dollars if you have a sufficient fund balance, we have approximately a nineteen percent of our expenditures in our balance, in our savings account, now, offset from that is, we have a deficit in our water fund and we have a deficit in our sewer fund, those, I believe, are the only other funds that we have deficits in, so you have to remember that while it's nineteen percent, you have to back out the amount that we are subsidizing, so to speak, the expenditures associated with those deficits in water and sewer, tonight, you took action to alleviate, hopefully, those deficits, that that is important, that our bond counsel and our financial advisor has recommended, so while it's not easy on our rate payers, it's something that's necessary, so in terms of using, getting back to the six hundred thousand dollars, we're not causing additional taxation for our residents associated with the expenditure of those dollars, but we would be investing in our infrastructure, I think in an appropriate way, so when you don't have a dump truck and you have two feet of snow, you can't do anything if you don't have the dump truck, I mean, that's another emergency, you need to have those trucks road-ready and available, when you have grass growing and you have ticks and bugs and it's not being taken care of properly and you're perhaps putting additional work on your other tractors, you need to have the truck, so, you know, you can go down the line with all of these, the only one that we may not need, and it all depends on, on our partner, which is the state and the sand salt check, whether we need that full fifty thousand dollars, but we want it set aside.
Right.
We're not saying we're going to spend that, the other area that I heard the Board of Education talk about just last night in the public hearing is their need to do HVAC work and their need to certainly have a furnace at Valley View, and also some of the Board of Education's security measures, which are critical for the security of our children and our staff, what I don't always understand, and it's difficult, is the Board of Education has some money in their operating budget for HVAC, and I don't know that they have any money in their operating budget for security, but those are some of the things that I want to talk a little bit more about when we speak with them on the twenty-fifth of the month.
Yeah, the, so two things, if I could just say, would be, one, I believe the water and sewer rate increases today are trying to balance the operations of the current budgets, not necessarily mitigating the complete deficit position.
Not complete, but I was told by the committee that their goal, Tom, is, as you stated, that we would be able to meet the annual budget needs.
Correct.
But that it would begin to eat away, eat away at some of that accumulated deficit. Jim, do you want to comment on that?
Well, I, I think on the water budget, again, the goal is to get to the, basically to eliminate the operating deficit, okay, the fact that we had to reduce to a lot of cost reduction as well as the increases, I don't see a lot of the accumulated debt reduction, that debt, the amount of accumulated debt on the water side is five hundred and eleven thousand dollars, that went up, it's at fifty-five last year, the, on the sewer side, we do have the opportunity, it all depends on how much money is needed on, basically, for capital and for the infrastructure, there's definitely money there that's going to help and get to the point where there was some of, of the bond costs have started to come away, and as those bond costs have come away, obviously, that allows you to start attacking some of the projects, for example, we have, with the clarifiers, there's a big project that's going to happen, we don't know exactly what that's going to cost, but as we, so as we continue with that budget, there may be opportunities there to start tackling that, the accumulated debt, so that's the goal.
So more soil and sewer than water, is that what you're saying?
Absolutely, because again, water with what's going on with MDC, and?
Right.
Last year, to get us to where we were, with the fifty-five, Bob had to find about seventy thousand dollars in operating savings, which is not easy to do, so.
And then the other point, on the Board of Ed HVAC, what is generally within the budget is the repairs, there are the ongoing repairs to the systems all around, plumbing repairs, and they're, they're often in constant of such big facilities, the service contracts are there for those vendors, the service contract for some controls and well as the upkeep, there are minor repairs, the things, the HVAC things that Dr. O'Reilly had spoke with, some of the units on top of the rooftop units are in, are in trouble, in the various rooms, there's air conditioning units that are on the, on the side of the wall, some of those are, what, many of them are the same age as when the, when the building was updated, and, and so they're reaching end of life, so those are the components, the Valley View school, the Valley View school system and the Gilder sleeping biz have a very antiquated control module that very needs to be updated, and that's, was hundreds of thousands of dollars on those, so there's numerous items like that, that, those are part of the capital plan, in this instance, that's why we put that into HVAC repairs, so that if you were to complete the repair to the Valley View boiler cheaper than what was budgeted, then, then we could utilize that to try to whittle away of some of these other HVAC repair, HVAC improvements and repairs that are, that are needed, similar with the security upgrades.
You know, what I'm trying to do is mitigate the impact of a mill rate increase, and I think everybody wants that, and when the Board of Education spoke to their presentation last night, they want three point eight percent increase, and that's a percent more, that's two hundred and thirty thousand more than is in your current budget, your current budget represents a point eight mill increase, and for every point one mill, you raise about eighty-three thousand dollars, eighty-four thousand dollars, somewhere in that range, so you can do the math, you need another point three mils, give or take, in order to achieve their request, which brings you to over a mill increase, in light of the coronavirus problems and the trouble that that's creating and the havoc that it's creating among our small businesses as well as our residents, residents are losing jobs, it's a crisis that we didn't anticipate when Tom and I were putting this budget together a few weeks ago, I mean, this is a rainy day, and I worry, as everybody does, that we are doing appropriate planning and measures, so I want the selectmen to think about that in light of how we're going to proceed with our operating budget, of course, but also, these needs within our capital system are things that you can't let go, because when the next crisis comes along and you don't have the equipment, then you really got a problem for some of these things, so it's not an easy answer, I would suggest that if you do the public hearing, you may get a lot of people, you have to be prepared that for April one, if you have this as a public hearing, I would want as many people as want to give insight to this, to be able to speak, but you also have to finish the night on April first of having a budget almost ready, because what we typically do is, after you, the board deliberate and tell Tom and me what you want, then we go back to the office for the next couple of days, we put the whole product together, then we bring it back to you for your final adoption, and that all has to be done before the eighth, so we'd have to meet on the seventh, likely, so if you went to the fifteenth, it might give you a little more time, but I just want to be certain that our residents understand what we're talking about.
And what I would note, you know, with regards, I know there's obviously a concern with the virus, and I've been fully engaged in that process in town, but keep in mind that at one point, we thought we were paying fifty, going to contribute fifty thousand dollars of contingency to the library, and that disappeared, so contingency, again, is there for a reason, as I so know well with the town, park, but, I mean, there is funds that we originally thought we were going to not have available, I mean, we, again, we don't know, and I've been in lots of discussions about it, we, who knows where things are going to go, but there is money in other places such as contingency that, that could, you know, cover some of those things.
And you feel, Tom, that the fund balance meets the requirements for the town in keeping its bond rating and also security for our town?
Yes, I mean, yeah, I think, I think we have a strong fund balance, when you look at the rating agencies, they usually utilize a higher, higher threshold than Connecticut utilizes, but in Connecticut, we have a strong, a strong fund balance, when the rating agencies look at it a little differently, they, they use a higher level, but it is strong in Connecticut. The, the, you know, the, the main revenue source that's troubling in the current year is obviously the, the building permits is a troubling source, I know, you know, we anticipated the two hundred and fifty thousand or so to come in, and, you know, we're not hitting that number, you know, for the, for, for the brain replace or, you know, in that area, so that, that number is a challenge, so we have to mitigate some of that in our expenditures or try to bring in others, revenues, you know, interest has been doing okay, but right now, the rates have taken a push down, we were, when we did this budget last year, we were at a two-two-five, recently, we were down in the one threes mostly, and it will drop again substantially now that they've dropped the interest rates down a full point, so that, you know, that'll be another number to look at, but in this scenario, based upon the, what we'd, you know, the positivity of last year, the strength in the fund balance, this seemed like a reasonable alternative to the, to increasing the taxation for next year, so that was the reason for this proposal, as well as the need of the items.
And you usually use surplus to, to put toward capital because it's not a good financial action to put it toward operating costs?
Correct.
Because you don't have that money available for the next year. So Rick, did you have a comment?
Well, just to reiterate a little bit what you were saying, as many of you know, I'm a businessman and I'm involved with people that have to pay rent, I'm involved with banks, and there's a real concern out there right now, I talk with bankers almost every day, and they're making provisions for people that can't pay their loans, I have commercial tenants that are probably not going to be able to pay their April rent, because in some cases, restaurants, as you know, have been told they have to close, other businesses just aren't doing the revenue, I have an associate that has, owns a thirty-two unit senior housing complex in Mudus, he was getting calls today with residents saying they can't pay their April rent, so I think we're just maybe on the edge tip of an iceberg, and I would be, suggest that, like Susan, that maybe just wait a couple weeks, let's see what happens, but I do not think there's going to be a big appetite for a tax increase, people are going to be hurting, and I think we need to wait and see where this all shakes out, I'm happy to hear we have a surplus, and I don't deny that, you know, the items that you want to purchase are, are valid, but I think we should just buy a little time here and not act hastily.
The surplus was from fiscal year nineteen. The surplus was from fiscal year nineteen. We're not, we're not talking about twenty, we're talking about nineteen.
Sorry.
So what do you want to do as a suggestion? What's your thought?
I think we should get, I, I think we should, like you said, uh, wait till the fifteenth, let's not overload our plate.
There, there is, there is no harm in having a public hearing. Um, I just, I don't think you should have it April one. I think if you're gonna have a public hearing, April fifteen would be the soonest that I would recommend. Because as you said, Rick, we may know a little bit more in terms of how we're doing. And um, I wanna be crystal clear to our residents that these are two separate decisions. There's the budget that you will have adopted that will go to town meeting and referendum. Now, as I told you under public comment tonight, the governor is considering, in light of the Corona emergency, waiving some of those requirements for budget adoption. And some of those requirements in our towns include a town meeting where you would have fifty or more people attending. So that's not gonna happen. And a referendum where you would have a thousand people or more attending. And that's not gonna happen, given the circumstances now, unless all that gets lifted. So they are taking actions, probably sometime this week, that would potentially, that's why I was reading some of my emails tonight. Potentially waiving some of those requirements for our communities, our cities and towns. What complicates things is that in Connecticut, almost every town has a different way of adopting their budget. From Board of Selectmen to Board of Finance to Town Meeting. And then some to referendum, some to mandatory referendums, some to um, by petition referendum. In our case, there is, there is the Board of Selectmen budget going to Town Meeting. And then to referendum, once, twice, and then set by this board. So if the governor issues an executive order that raises some of those requirements, the budget adoption process may change. And they may mandate certain things. They may, they may look at saying, we recommend that you not go over X number of percent. They recommend so much in terms of, of raising um, the tax rate. I don't know. But those are some of the discussions that are being had. We are in some uncharted territory here. But what we do need, and I think that we are very well doing, is protecting the safety and the welfare of our citizens. And part of that welfare and safety is not only planning how we will buy equipment or have the appropriate equipment, but also that we're financially stable. And we're certain that if we need to help our residents weather this particular crisis, we can. On the other hand, you still have to run the town. And you still have to make sure you're ready for that two-foot snowstorm that's gonna happen. Or for that grass that's growing, for the police that have to respond to the emergencies on our roads, in our houses, and in our businesses. And our cars are costing us money because they keep breaking down and they're being repaired. So those are the decisions that we're weighing, and I hope that people are listening tonight and can help us. And I think if you propose a, a public hearing for the fifteenth of April, it'll give our residents some time to talk with each of you, as well as um, our staff, and make some good decisions and help us out. Tom?
Uh, just the, one of the comments stated that we may be acting hastily. Um, I just wanted to clarify that. I do not uh, believe that we acted hastily at all. This was many weeks of analysis and meeting with department heads of the needs and trying to review capital lease plans. Um, talking with banks on, on, on how to, how to fund those. Uh, the fees and the um, the implication of that debt payment into your um, operating activities in fiscal year twenty-one. Um, and, and then uh, in the impact on the mil rate with the uh, items that the Board of Ed would like. There's many, millions of dollars worth of requests. If you were to look at the Board of Ed's budget and their request lines, there's significant requests in capital for the current year that far exceeds the three point eight, three percent general fund operating budget they're talking of and, a- as well. Um, and there's numerous from the Public Works Departments as, well as almost every department. So we try to do our best to come up with what was gonna provide the best service to uh, the taxpayers and to save you hopefully operational monies on a going forward basis. So that I just wanted to clarify that.
Tom, I, maybe hastily was the wrong term. I'm not opposed to the appropriations. I just think we have too much on our plate for April first, for the next couple of weeks, that's all.
That's fine.
That, that.
I just wanted to comment on the hastily part.
No, I, I, I'm sure you did your homework and, you know, on that.
Okay, is there a motion? Michael?
I'd like to make a motion that we hold a public hearing on April fifteenth at six-thirty.
Okay. It'll likely be in this building, the senior center, so we'll record that in a minute. John? April fifteen at six-thirty PM, motion made by Michael Pelton, seconded by Mr. Tripp. And if you could give that to him, he would, to John, he would know what, what we're talking about.
Yes.
Thank you, Tom. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I just have one quick comment because I'm very sensitive to this. That Ventrick mower, I don't want anyone to take it that that's being purchased strictly for the park. Because I think the discussion about that equipment was even before we knew we had hills at the park that we do. That is a versatile machine that we use for a lot of purposes. So I just know, I get sensitive about comments that could be made to say, well, they bought that for the park. It is for a lot of uses, so I don't want anyone thinking it's strictly for, just because I know how it'll play out.
Thank you, thank you.
One other thing, just to be clear. I don't care if it's April fifteenth or April third or whatever, I just think we have enough going on.
Oh, I agree, no, I agree.
It's not that I'm trying to push this off indefinitely at all. And if we need the mower, you know, and you wanna do it sooner, that's fine. I just think we have enough going on.
We have a lot of work, we have a lot of work to do before April eighth. Bob, did you wanna comment on something?
I'm glad I stayed. Um, Ventrick mower, just remember, it takes a while to not only engage in the purchase, but get the equipment. It's not always available, especially the larger. So we have a timeframe. At the rate we're going now, we'll be mowing in three weeks, believe it or not. Um, that Ventrick, thank you Ralph, is a multi um, system, basically a multi-attachment unit. It's gonna not only increase our ability to mow more areas, we have to mow them safely. We've created hills we've never had before with the park. It's going to do that, and it's gonna do it efficiently and safely. It's also gonna allow us to do more work at our transfer station, which we don't have the ability to do now, especially when it's wet. It's gonna be able to mow the transfer station hills more safely. It's gonna have attachments that are gonna increase the ability of a very minimal staff in the grounds department to do stuff more efficiently. So we hope to save, you've increased the, we've increased the need for time in grounds based on us increasing property that we now have developed for our residents. And we need to be able to make sure that we care for that. I will tell you this, our taxpayers are very um, accustomed to very well-maintained fields by our grounds department. And we want to continue to do that, so we need the equipment to be able to continue to do that, um, with the limited manpower that we have. So that's one addition that, as Ralph has pointed out, it's not just for the park. It's for the overall operation of that department, and it's going to help many other divisions in town. And it's gonna replace a very old piece of equipment eventually. So it's doing twofold.
Are you suggesting that we do this sooner? You're not gonna have enough time if we do it April fifteenth?
Yeah, I'll tell you, you know, no. I, I, I think the only issue with that entire timeframe is, to be perfectly honest with you, the dump truck. It takes a long time to build a truck. Um, you, the custom side of it, depending on how you want the bodies made and stuff. But we should be able, you know, you wanna have that on the road, and you wanna have some training on your new vehicles, um, in time to engage in your, in your work. We're down a truck. We're down really two trucks because I have one that's, two, both, both older dump trucks have bad engines, so it's getting late. Um, you're in a situation where if you take one plow truck off the road in the winter, you've increased your manpower and you've reduced your ability to clear roads, which will impact your schools, time-wise. You'll be splitting, you know, you, you, you know, you're adding, it's incredible.
Is April fifteenth is too?
I think you're good. I think you're good. Um, I, I, I think you're good. You just have to make it, um, you know, quick enough so that we can turn the corner on purchasing. And that gives us about, you know, five months to build the truck.
Motion's been made and seconded for the public hearing to be on April fifteenth at six-thirty PM on the topic of the supplemental appropriation as so described. Is, is there further discussion? There being none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. Thank you, Bob, and thank you, Ralph, and everyone. The next item is easier. Number eight, new business. Um, the next series of, of resolutions, the Fair Housing Action Plan, the Fair Housing Resolution, and the Authorizing Resolution for Small Cities Program and the ADA Notice and Grievance Procedure are all associated with annual statements that the town makes in terms of its compliance with federal law, as well as some, many of these are state law requirements as well. So if we could take each in turn, I know that you have the words in front of you. I would ask that when you make the motion, perhaps you ask that the reading be waived at this point. And we will start with the first one, which is the Fair Housing Action Plan. Who would like to?
Sure, I'll.
Jim?
Can I make a motion that we approve the Fair Act, uh, Fair Housing Action Plan as presented and that we waive the reading?
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, uh, sorry. Thank you, Lou. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. The next is Letter B, the Fair Housing Resolution.
Yep, I make a motion that we, we approve the resolution date titled Fair Housing dated March eighteenth, twenty-twenty, and that we waive, waive the reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that also Lou? Thank you, Lou. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, that motion carries, thank you. The next item?
Sure, I make a mo- motion that we approve the authorizing resolution of the Board of Selectmen for Small Cities Program dated March eighteenth, twenty-twenty, and again, that we waive the reading.
Seconded by Lou. Further discussion? And I'll point out that this is the resolution that you're authorizing us to apply for the Small Cities Program. And again, there's been some discussion that they may be changing the deadlines for this program as well. But we do need to have your authorization to proceed.
So this is for a grant?
Yes.
Basically?
Three hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. That would be, I don't, I'm not sure if you were here when we talked about this, Rick, but it's a.
I think that was the last meeting.
It's a homelessness diversion program that would assist our, some of our residents, as well as residents in our region, to find homes and to help them with some of the necessary down payments or the, you know, the, the, what do they call it? When you have to pay for your rent two months ahead. Your security deposit.
Security deposits.
Yeah. There, there's some monies in there for that. But it's a way of helping homelessness find appropriate housing. Any further discussion on that? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries. The next, ADA Notice and Grievance Procedure.
Sure, I'll make a motion that we approve, that we take these together, that we, uh, that we approve the Town of Portland ADA notice, as well as the Town of Portland ADA grievance procedures, and again, request that we waive the reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Lou, thank you. Further discussion, questions? There being none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, that motion carries as well. The next item is, I believe, Letter E, which is Land Conveyance Acceptance of Right-of-Way of the Bane Subdivision. I will tell you that the Planning and Zoning Commission agreed that this acquisition, or conveyance, I should say, should, should proceed. So they agreed. You had sent a request to them called an eight dash twenty-four, which is a requirement. So it was.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution titled Conveyance of Land for Right-of-Way, Bane's Subdivision, East Cotton Hill Road and Thompson Hill Road dated March eighteenth, twenty-twenty, and again, request that we waive the reading. Second.
Seconded by Lou. Any questions or discussion? There being none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, that motion carries. Now we'll move on to refunds of excess payments.
Sure, I make a motion that we refund the amount of eight dollars and fourteen cents to Timothy L. Deso.
Second.
Seconded by Ralph, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, the motion carries.
And make a motion that we refund the amounts of three hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-nine cents, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents, and one hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-one cents to VW Credit Leasing LTD.
Second.
Seconded by Ralph, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
And make a motion that we refund the amount of two hundred and two dollars and fourteen cents to JP Morgan Chase Bank, N.A.
Second.
Seconded by Ralph, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
I make a motion that we refund the amounts of nine dollars and eighty-one cents, and then again, a second, nine dollars and eighty-one cents to Peter W. Rand.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
And I make a motion that we refund the amount of ten dollars to Jennifer L. Savile.
Second.
Seconded by Ralph, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions, that motion carries as well. Status and committee reports? This side of the table? We did water and sewer, talked a little bit about other things.
No, you guys.
Run up there, my EDC, Ralph, or? Yeah, there's nothing real, real earth-shattering, right?
No, I'm trying to think. I've, seems like a lifetime ago, I can't. I'm sorry, I mean, we were both at the EDC and I just, nothing sticks to me that.
I guess there was some talk that resolved the, Bertram's gonna move the, the, what is it? Hart Jarvis House out of the way, but.
Yeah.
There was nothing real, um, nothing real, you know, nothing really anything new there. They're, they're doing work behind the scenes on infrastructure and clearing some things away, but um.
A new sign went up, I saw that.
New sign went up, um, supposedly CBS and Starbucks are on board. But I'm not a hundred percent sure there's a signed lease, uh.
Well, I think she said with Starbucks, there's something signed. I think with CBS, I mean, they're still waiting, I think, for the design to come back from CBS Corporation. Um, and they are, and one of the interesting things they noted is that CBS actually will build the building. They will use their own, they'll use their own um, company to do the build. They still are leasing it and everything, but that's, they just, that's their requirement that they actually do the build. I think the biggest thing that came out of EDC in that discussion is that, you know, we talked about, again, cause I brought it up. I said, you know, I get questions everywhere I go with regards to what's going on, nothing's happening. And um, and she pointed out, which she had said before, is that people have to realize is that no one would have expected that we would have had uh, the winter that we had. So he has construction crews that are in other places doing different stuff because he was planning based on the weather. And so now that you um, are closing in on April, then things will start happening because he's bringing that, those crews will be coming back. Cause he, he didn't expect to be able to do that stuff now, so. So I know, but again, until they. again, until they actually do it, until they take the fence down like they're planning to take the fence down and it starts to look like things are moving, it's very difficult for people to keep asking, they're going to keep asking the question.
Right, right.
Any other committee reports?
Just a quick one, the, um, sidewalk, sidewalk subcommittee, VOS Subcommittee, we met about a week ago and just talking about two things. One, the work is getting ready to start, um, for the Connectivity Grant, so we're going to see some additional sidewalks getting done on Main Street and taking a look at and identifying really the remaining funds that are left over from the work that was done as part of the bonded work and what sidewalks we're going to target going forward as we understand the process and the process that we need to, uh, to go through to get those in, in process.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'll add a couple of things, just quick for the park. One is, um, we did, um, talk about, um, signs and regulations for the parks, so what we're going to do is form a committee between the Park Committee and the Parks and Rec Commission and allow them to go off and spend some time trying to make sure we could figure out what the rules and regulations should be at the parks so that the signage could be prepared for opening. The second thing we talked about was putting together a committee from the same two groups to look at preparing for an opening day event. And obviously, coming with that, we certainly talked about what the current virus situation and what that will mean to, uh, any opening event. So we know that will have an impact in all likelihood, so, um, those at least start working on a strategy and what they'd like to do. When that day will be, obviously, is more impacted by the virus now than when we think we're going to be done.
Thank you. Any other comments? Uh, general, I'll see, public comment, Kevin?
There's one. This was from, oh, I lost the name. Paul Acker, thirty-two Bartlett Street. He stated that there were many ways brought up at the meeting to fund the park, including creating a Friends of the Dog Park. He also directed a question towards Selectman Pelton about what the number of incidents were and can you cite your source? That was the, for the dog park.
When I was checking other dog parks out last year, I spoke to a number of people at the parks, just dog owners that were there with the park, as well as the Animal Control Officer in Rocky Hill, who also related that, um, there were several at the Rocky Hill Park in the year previous, dog on dog, either attacks or bites or injuries. And just from the people I spoke to, again, there were several that were brought up by several other people, so it certainly wasn't a huge amount, but it was enough that, um, you know, the people I'd spoken to were concerned about it, or, um, other people in town that have gone to other dog parks and stopped going had expressed concern about it. So I'd say probably, you know, eight to a dozen people I've spoken to over the last year or so that have expressed concern about it. Now, a number of the people haven't, a number of people like the parks, they enjoy it, um, but it was a, it was a louder and it was a louder minority than I expected. That was my only point. Thanks for the question, Paul.
And Mr. Don Guin would like to know when you have the meeting on the signage.
So with regards, I'm going to assume he means the park signage. With regards to that, what'll happen is they still got to reach out and get the members who have the two committees that will, uh, will come together to work on that. I'm going to guess he might have an interest in knowing what happens with that, so I'll certainly reach out to Don to make sure that he's aware of it once we have them together.
And that's the end of the public comment.
All right, thank you, Kevin. And thank you, those listeners who sent in their comments. I also had a comment from, um, Sherry Bragg, and she writes, "My husband and I would like to meet with you concerning forming a private committee to look for funding for a dog or exercise, dog park or exercise area, and we volunteer to be on such committees." Sherry Bragg. I will be in touch with Ms. Bragg. Okay, um, now we're on number eleven, the Board of Selectmen, general informal discussion. Anything informal you want to talk about?
I think we've been formally talked about those, and I think we have said lots of words tonight.
I think I've used my capacity for words.
I must say though, this new format, it felt like we were on a, on a talk show. We got Kevin reading questions throughout, it was a different format.
I, I think it's actually very helpful and I appreciate what we're hearing from our residents.
It's got more people involved.
Yeah.
This is great. I do have one, one, because I haven't used up all my words tonight, right? With the whole crisis going on right now, the one thing I have noticed, uh, that, that I've seen is that the people in town have really come together. I've seen people cooperate, I've seen people help each other out and reach out to each other. The meal program at the high school for town has gone wonderful. I've checked in with them each day for the last couple of days. It's just been good to see our fellow residents working together and helping each other out and, you know, approaching this thing, which is, which is a huge thing. It's going to be one of these events in our life that we're going to remember, um, for a long time, but, uh, it's just been good to see people when something like this happens are really helping each other out, so, um, it's been nice to see.
I did get a call from our Lieutenant Governor today, Susan Bisiewicz. She's planning to come to the high school on Friday, so if you're available, she'll be, I'll send you the time. She wants to see the food program. She heard great things about it and I want to thank, um, our Selectmen that helped with that. I know Mike and Jim in particular were very helpful and our school food service, Sedexo staff, our superintendent, and so many other people, so thank you very much. Good point. I have nothing on the follow-up items, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who seconded that? Lou?
That was an enthusiastic one for me, but-
All in favor? Aye. It is ten twenty-five PM.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.